I'll call the Dunbarton Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
You did?
You did. I'm just getting my agenda. This is for Thursday, September 30th. Only two selectmen here tonight. The Chair of the Board is home ill. And it's only two selectmen present. The town administrator is present. And according for the, uh, for the town in Dunbarton is Leo Martell. Welcome back Leo. We miss you.
Um, I did an excellent job. I didn't think I got the job back.
Okay, fair enough. Um, also here tonight, we have the cemetery trustee. Uh, if it has sufficient capacity tonight, we have Don Larson as a cemetery trustee also tonight. And I'll hold it right there. Alright Bob, we have two sets of minutes.
Yeah, a motion to approve the regular minutes of September 16th. As written.
I'll second that. It was a good job, I thought. All in favor? Any discussion on this, Bob?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. Well, we'll be all three together.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, eight twenty-three non-public minutes of September 16th.
As written?
As written.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any discussion on those, Bob?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. And a motion to approve the nine oh five PM non-public minutes of September 16th, 2021, is written.
I'll second that. Any discussion on those, Bob?
No.
All in favor?
Right, aye.
Those who not see the link, put it up straight up. Okay, I'm going to, um, at this point, we open up for public comment. Please just state your name for the record.
Don Larson, thirty-two Birchfield Drive.
Your name is Don, what's your name?
Uh, Halloween on the Commons, I was approached by Ted Hood, who heads up the robotics team. And he was wondering if we would let him do it. I says, by all means, we want as many clubs involved as possible. So they wanted to pitch a ten-by-twenty tent, that they have for the robotics and that. But they're gonna basically hand out candy. And that, uh, so it'd be on the, uh, west side of the bounce down.
They coordinate, I, I don't, Bob, do you have an issue with that?
What's that?
About the robotics, another tent for Halloween? And then even?
Uh, it's pulls on.
I would just say coordinate with the leaders of the garden club.
Right, that's how come they contacted me.
Right, so I just want some inter mean lean of, and be flexible enough. The only thing, the warning they gave to the garden club, clusters are showing up here of COVID. If we get a spike in COVID, we may have to cancel it the week before. And you have the flexibility to cancel at the last minute.
And I told Ted that also, that we're on standby as far as that goes.
Good, good. But it's a still a green light as of this point. Okay, but the thing is, we just have to have the flexibility to cancel at, at the last minute if needed.
Okay.
Okay, so Bob, I don't, that's quite consensus. I think we have no issue with an additional tent being set.
Okay, I wanted to get as many clubs involved as possible. And this is great, you can say, you've got, yeah, you're all set.
And on behalf of the children, if it means more candy, two thumbs up.
They'll have a sugar high on Monday morning. One other thing is that, uh, my cemetery trustees and myself, well, we've been trying to find vacancies out here in the cemetery.
Okay.
And that because there's the need for full body, uh, locations. And we found several that have been sitting there. There's one that's been put on hold for almost forty years. Four spaces and that. And so we're gonna probably act on that. If we can get ahold of anybody in the family, they may not even know about it.
Understood.
And that, so, uh, I think that's, that's about it for that.
Okay, I'll move on to anyone else for public comment? No? Is it sir? State your name, sir.
Peter Jusowicz.
Okay.
I'm gonna get a speed bump installed in my road, on Gorham Road, Gorham Drive.
Okay, we're gonna talk about, that's on the agenda tonight. We're gonna talk a little bit about speed bumps, but only briefly tonight. And I'll, I'll share why, okay?
Cause I got the speed bump, or what it looks like.
It's, it's not a matter of what it looks like. It's a matter of, um, uh, policy in town, how we're gonna handle it. We only have two selectmen here tonight. We have some information that we just got from the police department. We got information from New Hampshire Municipal, Municipal Association.
And the road agent.
And the road agent too. So we're gonna put a, we're gonna study for about at least, it's our homework for the next two weeks before our next meeting. We're gonna have a more of a, uh, more of an informed discussion in two weeks.
Cause what they're doing is, we got them out there, and it slowed the people down for about an hour.
Right.
And then you guys get phone calls.
Understood. And the thing is, uh, there are problems with privately installed speed bumps. And, uh, my, my first impression is I'm not terribly enamored with the idea because who's to say that in my neighborhood, someone's gonna wanna put speed bumps in. And then Bob's neighborhood, they're gonna wanna put one on, on Main Street. We just don't know the implications. And so we have some legal opinions now. We have the, the RSAs we have to look at. We're gonna look at and see what options we have.
Because they're removable.
It's not where they're removable, but the thing is, we wanna see what, what legalities we have to follow, following the New Hampshire roadway RSAs. And so, thing is, I'm not gonna say you're gonna hit tonight. However, I'm gonna say is, uh, Leen has been diligent in contacting the New Hampshire Municipal Association for the information, legal information we need. We get the police department providing us their information. And they're, we're waiting on some road in agent information and opinion. And then we're gonna have a discussion probably in, in two weeks from tonight. Bob, would you agree with that?
Yeah, we'll do it. All three selectmen are also.
Right. And the thing is, I don't wanna just vote on something between me and Bob and not having a third selectman because, uh, we rule by oligarchy, rule of three. And, uh, we wanna make an informed decision. Yeah, exactly. Me and Bob don't wanna vote against each other and we, uh, then we're, we're in a stalemate.
Because the people that call you are the ones in the, uh, let's say, the speeders.
Yeah, understood.
And I got a lot of kids that walk in the neighborhood, people walk the dogs. They don't even wanna walk on the street no more because cars are, duh, fly by and they don't care.
I give the same issue of mine, but especially around, uh, uh, between six-thirty and maybe eight-thirty.
Uh, it always runs between like four and six-thirty.
Yeah, it's, it's going to work and then the kids start coming out. And the thing is, if they're late for work, it's like a pedal to the metal. And so, uh, okay, but we're gonna, we're gonna defer any, uh, decision on it. And, but thing is, I wanna study some of the RSAs that were presented to me today. And I wanna get the police department here to give their opinion. I, I wanna get a, make an informed decision. Not a distraction. So I say, thank you for coming in tonight. And I invite, this is what it is, right? Understood. And I invite you to come back.
Cause some of the people say, oh, it's gonna damage my car. Well, you go to the mall, you don't bet when it goes there.
Understood, understood. But the thing is, uh, but I'll, I'll give you, we're gonna give a fair hearing in two, in the next meeting.
Okay, so two weeks?
Yes, sir. So I invite you back.
Which is October?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Okay, fair enough. Thank you. You're welcome, sir. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Well, the thing is, uh, I, I don't wanna make this, I, I wanna read the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And the thing is, I wanna get the police chief, uh, acting or police chief in here to give his comment.
Well, you know, you should allow the other selectmen to weigh in also.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. It's a rule by three, not by two. And, uh, if it's a controversial decision, Dave's gotta pick the blame line.
I just wanted Jeff to present when you discuss it, so.
Okay. Hey Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Um, I missed it. Yes, you did, sir.
You doing good, man?
For the, for the record, I just, uh, we were in the process of gathering information. Uh, you, next week will be a more important meeting to attend. We have NHMA, we have, next, two weeks. NHMA, uh, we have the police chief chiming in. And so we wanna get a, and I want Dave here.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. I was gonna tell you, Dr. Chris.
Okay. But the thing is, we wanna,
we had a, a concern.
Yes, we all, we all have concerns and the thing is, and so, uh, next, next meeting, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Bob Leonard, Holiday Shore Drive.
I was gonna say, uh, we, we're still meeting every two weeks. I thought we went back to weekly.
Uh, according to the schedule, the summer schedule, it was, it starts back at the end of October.
Wow, in fall. Well, that's what discussed that. Cause we're getting into an area where I think you've,
bunch of seasons coming up.
Yeah, no kidding, you know?
We can just, we should discuss it then. This is, this is gonna be a nice project. It happens that there's two holidays in November, so it looks like we're in November doing the same thing. When it actually was,
Right, and that's my point though, is we're getting towards the end of the year, we're not a whole lot, um, on the movement.
You wanna move, wanna move, make a, for next week?
The summer schedule doesn't go until the end of fall.
Right, right. Alright, so what's that? You wanna make it for next week? You wanna make?
You know, if we don't have much business, it goes over quick.
So, I mean, You know, in all fairness to the gentleman, I just came back on the fourteenth. Why don't we just make sure we send an email, maybe a follow telephone call too? We'll do it next week then?
I'll see Pete. I'm, I'm, I'm around the corner from you. Mike and Carrie tell them that the meeting's been changed to Thursday.
Well, point, point taken. And I think is, I think we'll meet next week then. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to state that, um, I'm in that neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I totally agree with Pete as far as the speeders. My wife and I walk, believe it or not, from that area all the way down to Snook and Gosden back. And sometimes that's at two in the afternoon. We got people doing fifteen, sixteen miles an hour on that road. I've even talked to Dunbarton PD and they, when they had that little sign right by Gorham Drive. And they're pulling people over doing fifty-five and, like, didn't you just see? They're pulling them over a camera, so they're just going around the corner and like, didn't you see that the flashing signs said, we're doing fifty-five? Like, people are just generally going fast. I don't support what Pete wants to put in as far as that type of speed bump because it's a private thing. I'd love to see something like in Manchester, around the post office, they've got the built-in, it's a speed hump.
Pete, is it cable tops that they call?
Yeah, they have a pitch in a large flat area that it pitches back down.
I think the police department wanted spikes. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, cause we've, we've had Dunbarton PD down by the beach at the end of Gorham Drive. And they've caught people doing forty-five down Gorham Drive.
But the thing is, uh, you know, I, I have to say, it's not unique to your neighborhood.
Oh, no.
And it is, it's, uh, as you said, going to Gorham, it's the same thing. And the thing is, there's a gentleman in the back row there who would almost have the same issue in his world. But the thing is, it's not unique to any,
All of them, I know.
The thing is, uh, uh, and I'm already gonna say this, but I, cause I don't wanna, um, form an opinion too soon. But I can't see speed bumps across the entire town. I just can't see that.
No, no.
Exactly. And, and we have a lot of neighborhoods in town who would say, well, if you have a speed bump, then, and if a selectman said you could have a speed bump, why can't we have a speed bump? Go ahead. True.
Well, especially on Holiday Shore Drive, cause we have a park there. And there are children at that park now, right? And people are doing forty on that road and the speed limit's fifteen. And there's dogs in the area, there's people walking. That's a happily walk theory because nobody drives to the park and they're walking.
I also have some background information I could share with some residents down there regarding the speed limit signs down there. And the, and the speed limit signs were, uh, at least from my discussion with the police department, they were put up there, um, not consistent with New Hampshire public highways.
They weren't sanctioned.
What, what might say?
Yeah, and the thing is, and further research on that, just to let you know, it's a misdemeanor to do that.
Really?
Yes.
Well, we've been here since, oh, Florida, you know, the one by the park has gone up since before, like, so.
And so the thing is, I, I, I'm not going out to look out to, to slap people's hands. But the thing is, um, what I don't wanna do is have people, and people put up speed limit signs and, uh, without being sanctioned.
Definitely. Yeah, no, we haven't done that, not, not planned.
Explain to me that, they further, chief further explained to me that in order to put up a speed limit sign, the correct way per RSA is you gotta do a speed study.
And it's traffic study.
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long process. And so, uh, even this board may have heard for some direction that in the past that they played. And so, the thing is, it's a learning process for me.
I, I think I would cheer your concern though, that if it's gone one place, then it's two places, and more places.
That's ten places. I don't need to interrupt. Well, no, it, it's permanent, always talking about the, um, discussion with Chris Renlyer. That was one of his big concerns is, what if neighborhood X, they feel the same thing and then the resident wants to throw them out there? How do you go willy-nilly then? And then you lose control of it. It wouldn't really be fair, even though it's a problem.
I think is, I agree, that was his, his, one of his contenders. Likewise, because, I mean, I'm just walking my dog in the morning, it's maybe six-thirty. And the thing is, wow, I'm saying, it's thirty-five, I bet that was at least forty-five right there. But the thing is, and that's just my neighborhood.
And there were some natural speed bumps down there, but we eliminated.
We have one more comment from the public here, go ahead.
Well, maybe if the police actually find the speed which we want to allow, maybe they slow them down once in a while.
I think, uh, that would be a discussion we may have with the police department. In other words, we can maybe be a little more aggressive in enforcement, especially in these congested neighborhoods.
Keep patting them on the back and say, slow down here, okay buddy?
Right. And the thing is, it's nice to be your friend, but sometimes you can be your friend so many times and sometimes you need a little bit of a, a shakeup.
Yeah, don't have a law there, you're not gonna,
Right, that, that would be, I would support something like that as a, as a citizen. Then I would love to see something like, you know, a couple of fines handed out, so it's like, you know.
I'm not doing that.
Okay, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna close public comment. Uh, but the thing is, next week, we're gonna discuss it?
Next week.
Okay, I just wanna give you a courtesy, but thank you. I wanna say thanks for coming in.
And I will, I will tell all about it.
I didn't wanna miss it.
Okay, well.
We'll see you later.
By the way, before you close public comment, great job on the roads down there, Jeff and this group.
Thank you, appreciate it.
They've done a great job.
He's been, he's been doing a good job this year with no bond. I love it.
I know, I know.
They were overdue down there, they needed some.
You know, maybe that would be the answer, would you, put some poples in there.
Uh, there were a fair number of poples.
There was more than a fair number.
And they still were complaining about it. It weren't them until longer, so.
I, I have a four-by-eight trailer and it, it's a tilt trailer, so it sits on the frame. And it makes a little bit of noise coming down the road. As I pulled in the other day, my neighbor across the street said, hey, you're coming down the road.
It's still. Here's my answer, thank you, see ya later. Okay, public comment is closed. And, um, Bob, um, last week, uh, we, uh, in light of the, uh, the short staffing at the transfer station, I allowed interim hire to go on.
Yeah, and we're gonna, yeah.
And the thing is, um, however, the thing is, uh, I told the gentleman it was interim hire, but to be fully, it has to be vetted by the entire board and voted on by the entire board. And so I said, uh, it will be officially, this week we vote him in. If, if approved, we let him out. I interviewed him with Leen and, uh, he's a Dunbarton resident. And, uh, I give him two thumbs up. I have no problem. I saw him working already. And, uh, I give him two thumbs up. Leen?
I agree with you. Um, he was very polite, very clutch and just eager to start working and then he's passed the physical, so.
And his business, uh, he has got a business right now, which is, uh, he needs something to supplement his income. Or is he got a home run business, he needs something, looking for something to supplement his income?
So you wanna make a motion to hire Cameron LaPage?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to hire Cameron LaPage. Is the new transfer station attendant employee a step one at a rate of thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents effective nine twenty-three?
And that's like a new motion.
Any further discussion on that, Bob?
No, really, you can think, uh, other than it adds, and other than saying, hands at the transfer station.
The only thing I would not authorize until we have it fully approved is, is a safety boost.
Yeah, yeah, he did have some.
He did have some, so I think is, we can authorize that from there on out.
When he comes back.
Yeah, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Don Larson is next on Reach Across Dunbarton?
Yes, uh, I have created a LLC, Reach Across Dunbarton LLC. And I got the paperwork back from the state. They did read a copy of it.
Yep, you have it in your bag.
And, uh, I will be open, how did I got that? When I get a chance, I'll open up a, a bank account. And by that time, we'll have, uh, the final figure that's in the fund. And transfer that over and that way it takes the liability off of the town for, for Reach Across Dunbarton. And, uh, the other, uh, project, uh, I'd like to be able to keep my donation box out here. And so all checks,
Is it in the hallway?
On the hallway. And, uh, also in the library, once it opens up again. And that, and, uh, checks will be made out to Reach Across Dunbarton, which is, keeps it simple.
Okay.
Uh, I, uh, got a new project that I'm working on right now, also under my Reach Across Dunbarton umbrella. And that is to, uh, raise funds to put, uh, the American flag on approximately fifty-four, fifty-six, uh, telephone poles. And, uh, I've been talking with the phone company. And I know I have to go through EverSource, but I, uh, I think the phone company is possibly is gonna partner with me on this. You know, because they've got the lift truck and everything else.
Okay.
Uh, the flags would start at the forty mile an hour, uh, uh, side, uh, by Bernard Road and go to the other forty, uh, mile an hour speed limit, uh, at the end on South, South Start.
The thirty mile an hour. The thirty mile an hour.
Uh, no, forty, forty coming this way, coming south at the, uh, yeah, it'll be thirty.
Right, so you're one of those speeders.
Yeah. But anyway, there, and then Robert Rogers rode from the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit up to the Commons. The backside of school street on the Commons. And then three poles in front of Page's Corner Cemetery. And I think there'll be two poles in front of the East Cemetery.
Are you gonna maintain, how, this is year round, you're gonna maintain?
No, uh,
On the special occasions?
We'll put them up, uh, before Memorial Day. Take them down after D-Day in June, so roughly two weeks.
Right.
Put them back up before Fourth of July, take them down after the Fourth of July. Labor Day, put them up, you know, for a week or so right there, and then Veterans Day. Those four, four times.
So, that's your, that's your project, so I don't have a problem.
No, the thing is, uh, and, and I'm gonna be very succinct about this. The, the selectmen really don't have much say over this because it's private property. Taliban poles.
No, I, I realize that. We've gotta get permission from EverSource and that. But, uh, uh, I need to know if the selectmen would like to participate.
I'll put it this way, wait till the Thursday, then we'll have a discussion on it.
Okay, that sounds fair. And I'll give you more details so you can see what we're talking about. But, uh, uh, approximately, uh, and I've been pricing everything out. A complete, uh, flag, pole, mount, and that, we're looking at roughly sixty dollars maybe, you know,
Per flag.
Right in there, per, per flag. So we're at roughly thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars, which I'll raise the money.
I recommend polyester, no cotton.
And I offered to the phone company, you know, if they'll do it, you know, if they have to pay overtime or something like that. I says, you know, I'll help with that also. But it'll be my job to raise the funds.
Okay, sounds like a, a good interesting project, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, I've got people saying they'll donate, so.
Okay.
I think it'll look good.
I think it's, uh, it'll be an added addition to the town for the holidays. I'm glad it's not year round though.
Yeah, it does look pretty when it drags the hooks that, like, that, and the flags out, so it'd be nice.
And a good quality, three-by-five flag, which I think is more than big enough.
Yeah.
And, uh, heavy-duty mounts and everything, so.
I just would recommend nylon or cotton, so rain, if any rain, it'll last longer. Nylon material.
No, this is, uh, this will be, it's weatherized, it's embroidered. These are embroidered flags. And they're all made in America. Uh, I can get them cheaper if they were made someplace else, but, uh, these are made in Florida. Uh, Grace Alley is the, that company.
Okay, very good.
And that, and, uh, actually I can get them cheaper through Amazon, same flag, Grace Alley. But, you know, that's the way, uh, you know, to get the price down.
Well, I'll look forward to having more information and having David involve in that discussion here.
Yeah, okay. I will have it.
And with that, I say thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you moving your money from the town, cause this way here, it's not just a liability, it's, you know, it, it could be a number of things that could possibly happen. You might say your accounting's wrong, uh, I think I had more money than that in my account or whatever. But it eliminates all of that, you know, cause we shouldn't be having custodial accounts is what it ends up being.
Yeah. Now, I, you know, like I say, you guys helped me get it off the ground and everything and so.
And, uh, can I make a separate announcement, since, since I have him here? Thing is, um, you've been nominated by the town as a volunteer of the year. And, uh, your nomination's been, must have been sent forward. And, uh, I sent it forward this, uh, in the last week and the thing is, it was approved by Dave and Bob. And, uh, so it's, uh, you've been nominated, sir.
Well, thank you.
We should know something around November fifteenth.
Oh, alright.
Thanks for all of what you do. Sometimes we have to keep you on a straight line and, uh, by, by rules, but.
Well, I'm trying to learn.
But the intent is always honorable.
Alright.
Thank you, gentlemen. Make sure you stop by with me next week, cause I'll have something for you.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we talked about speed bumps already. Bob, I'm, I'm pretty happy we just deferred on that today if it's back.
Yeah.
Okay, third quarter review is leading, if you could lead off that.
Sure. Okay, you have two reports in front of you. You can, you know, look at expenses for us.
There's so many staring at you.
Yeah, um, so again, I provide these to the board just so that you can be informed. If you have questions with any of the accounts that, uh, you see that are overspent, you can ask questions. For example, if you go to page two of expenses, you can see that the zoning board legal was budgeted for a thousand dollars. And they currently spent twelve thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars, so they're overspent by eleven thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Don't see that often. It's been one of those years for that comment. And they're seeking, um, legal support from a new firm, so they're a little bit more expensive than what we're accustomed to, so.
As long as they're good advice.
I think they are. They're doing, everyone seems to be happy with their, um, advice.
Most of them are, some of them are, like, doing very well, but, but, even the police department, like, twenty-seven percent of the budget left.
Yeah, that's where they should be roughly, at the bottom, for the bottom line.
And they were, there was some concern there earlier in the year, but we're doing alright then.
Yeah.
Fire Department's excellent.
Obviously, they don't, um, I have, uh, asked John to bill us monthly for the volunteer firefighters. That way it makes it a little bit easier to calculate track and then, um, we'll get a better idea of what his remaining budget, cause last year he was underestimated and came up with a number that he presented to the board. And he didn't even touch the budget hardly, so this way here you can monitor it monthly.
Even Solid Waste is doing good, uh, for the transfer stations, doing well. Well, Alfred is doing well?
Uh, well, over on the overtime line for Solid Waste, but bottom line, still has forty-two percent, so that's good.
That's excellent. Old Home Day, it looks like they were returning some dollars to us?
Yeah, twelve hundred bucks. I think they just paid, yeah, they should, that should be it, because they were just paying to bill today, this week.
Okay.
And then libraries on schedule for their, um, eleven month scheduled payments. We finish up with their budget for this, uh, November thirtieth, so they have bills to pay, uh, for the month of, uh, December. Uh, revenues look really good.
Any surprises?
Well, if you turn to the back page for a quick synopsis, uncollected balance as of the third quarter, when I ran this report, uh, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand eight-twenty-five that we need to, uh, collect before the end of the year to meet our projected revenues that we proposed to the voters, which was, uh, one million ninety-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-two. And then, um, I did some research on the rooms and meals comparative to last year's revenue. They only have six months posted, but for the first six months of this calendar year, they've exceeded every month in, uh, meals and rooms. So I suspect that they're gonna come in right on target with our budget. So I expect that we'll be seeing that one thirty-five. Highway block grant, we still have a fourth payment that's outstanding, that has been budgeted, um, through the state, so we can expect that. And then I asked the clerk for, uh, the deputy for her vehicle registration revenue for the month of September, because they close at September today.
Right.
Um, that was the report as of yesterday. And then Linda just gave me a report today, um, that fifty-six thousand's jumped up to sixty-one seven ninety-four. So another five. So technically outstanding, uncollected is forty-four thousand seven eighty-eight remaining that we need to meet our required, uh, proposed budget. That's fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty. and twenty-nine dollars.
Per month.
Per month, if you do the calculation. And so even with the extra five, will be about ten thousand for the next three months, so we're gonna exceed our.
Our revenues.
Revenue, it should be a good year plus.
Okay, I was worried about the room and meals with COVID, we, we, it was a, it was a lot for us last year.
Yeah, and I did look at last year, and I'm looking at this year, and they've really exceeded their, their numbers from month to month. And it's a good thing.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, um, well, we have to, uh, the next one is send in an overlay amount to cover abatements for the tax I can rate. Um, the more, I just, my understanding is the more money we take and put in aside for our tax payments, future tax payments directly impacts the tax rate.
Correct, but if we were advised by our auditor that you have to kind of project a number that you feel would be a good, um, number to cover, any, uh, anticipating abatement applications that we would have to give back? And as the board knows, we had, um, a recent dispersment to one of the utility companies that was almost a hundred thousand dollars. And granted, that was an over, it was a combination of about six years, but there's still two years outstanding. And then I just got their application for abatement this past June for the twenty-twenty, so they, this is a regular pro- process for them, they apply for an abatement every single year.
What you're recommending, recommended amount we put aside?
I would not go over less than fifteen, I would prefer to put twenty-five, because I did a study on what we had left from our overlay and where we break down the wider a few years we were over. Um, and if we do not budget enough on the overlay, then we basically deplete our surplus.
What did we budget last year?
Last year was an exception, we had a revow and we budgeted about fifty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand on the tax rate is about four cents, and twenty-five thousand is about six cents on the tax rate. But I, I would feel more comfortable with twenty-five, but the board sets the tax, but sets that number and that.
I, I like to, when, when's that deadline here to set this?
I, if I get a call from the DRA, because our financial report is in, um, it's gonna happen very quickly, we typically will out, we have our tax rate set by, by now, but because we're behind on our, our MS five thirty-five.
Love your thoughts.
We can wait a week till next Thursday.
That's what I was just thinking, is get the third selectman in, we can decide on a number that's comfortable to everybody.
Yeah, I think, uh, twenty-five may be a little bit short, fifty-five maybe too high.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, I'm looking for something in between, but I like to get Dave's input in there, too.
Okay.
Okay, but, uh, I think that more since tomorrow, next Thursday, while we put that agenda for next Thursday.
Which is my reason for going, wait, by wait now, because, as you mentioned, 'cause I looked at the calendar at home, 'cause I fixed my October calendar that I have on my desk, and so I'm looking at November, and November, you have two holidays in November.
Yeah, on the Thursday.
So that means you would only have four meetings within the next two months, two in October, or I think it's a third.
Yeah.
Or is it a third?
Two, four, one, six, seven, eight, all told for the last three months, so.
For the last three months, because you have four in December.
Yep.
Okay, so, I think it's good, I'll put that. Okay, next one is, um, uh, we have some information from the fire chief, uh, recommendation, and, uh, Lee's gonna talk to that.
Oh, um, is that the domain?
It's a, it's a dot com.
Okay, so I put this on the agenda, because Joe attended a, um, mutual aid meeting where they discuss a lot of different, um, subjects, and one of the items that came up was that with, in light of this, um, local town that lost a lot of money, um, it was highly advised that the towns should, municipal cities, towns, should apply for a, a dot gov domain. Um, I checked with our, um, tech support, and, um, this also, this document here also says that there's no cost to apply. The tech support, True North, said that they would do this at no cost for us.
Really?
So they would just connect all of our existing emails to this dot gov and do the transition for us.
I think that's another layer of security, I'm all for this.
Yeah, they, they, I guess that dot gov, um, has more security when you have that official, but you have to apply for it, so that's what I'll be doing. If the board has no objections to that.
No, no, that's, that's a great idea.
Okay.
Just, how, we tell chiefs, say thank you for bringing that to our attention.
That was, yep, well.
Okay, and Nedlock said, I'm gonna hit right quickly. Uh, we were talking about the, um, uh, School Street Cafe, and, uh, I got lost in the emails when I was reading, what, what's going on with that right now?
Um, there, I think when I sent you guys email, um, my understanding from the building department is that what you got, were given at the last meeting was the excerpts that really applied to that.
Okay.
Uh, since then, there's one email that's on the top that came from the state, that came in from Mike today, I think it was, except for one from like a Sarah or Karen or.
Okay.
It might be flagged, not really, Karen.
Okay, yes, okay.
Um, Mike thought that he had provided everything that he, the board needed to make a decision. Um, again, he continues to find, um, evidence through the different organizations that they're on track in what they're doing, but, um, Dave.
I, I, I don't, um, I think, I don't think it's the jurisdiction of the board to overrule the, uh, the building inspector at all. I, I just, I think the building inspector is following the rules of this, of this, of the fire marshal of the state, and so, uh, I, I like to go with the recommendation of our building inspector, at least he's following it, there's nothing, I.
If he's following the rules of the state, I agree.
Yeah.
And he is looking for, um, a response from the board for action on that.
I wouldn't say, uh, the, for Mike to continue his great work, I think it's, um, um, that building is a multi-use building, it has, um, people living there, and if there was a fire, if they were just, if he's really making coal, and there was a fire in there, we have a disaster on our hands, I think Mike's taking the high road by making sure they adhere to the regulations, the fire marshal's office, and the state regulations, so. I would recommend that, uh, that the, uh, Mike continues his work, uh, following regulations and the advice of the state fire marshal.
And I know that the last meeting, the board was going to forward a letter, they were looking for a response from the board.
All right, and the thing is, the response is, um, the response should be, I think the, uh, we certainly are currently in agreement with the building inspector, that a hood is required, and to be consistent with the recommendations of the fire, of the New Hampshire State Fire Marshal. And any further details should, should be addressed to the building inspector within the building department. Bob, any additional words you want to say?
Well, that covers it, you know, I mean, looking at all the emails of correspondent back and forth, and, uh, there is a recommendation, and they do have a hood, so I think it's prudent to, uh, to make sure that it's installed.
And, uh, you know, it is a cost, but things, that's the cost of doing business safely. Okay, there's a county, we got a budget information from the colleague, uh, Lee?
Yeah.
And, uh, we owe them only a million dollars, huh?
Right, so last year was just under a million dollars, this year is just over a million dollars, but because of the new tax revenue.
Yeah.
It really, it looks like it's gonna be going down at estimated seven cents for twenty twenty-one. So that portion of the total tax rate, we'll see.
Right, but as, as you say, lower tax rate, but zero sum gain, 'cause your houses are worth more now.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Okay, um, next item was welfare and a budget update. Uh, I didn't see this today.
Yeah, just got that.
She's attended the meeting, was held remotely due to the pandemic, here gearing up for the holiday food basket program. Joe Marie secured the firehouse for, uh, for a location, and, uh, looks like they're, it's, uh, they're working with the congressional, the temper and, uh, congressional church to help identify families, Bob. I'll give that to you, take it.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
I listened, I heard what you said.
Okay, and so working projects, I think, uh, this, uh.
They make, they make a good team, they're doing well.
Yeah, they're working well, yeah. And they're, they're working ahead of it before the holidays, make sure they got a location set up, fantastic. Okay, just an FYI, Bob, we should read the minutes of the Dunbar Restoration Hall Committee minutes.
They, they were online.
Okay.
I got those.
Oh, no, I even got the email from Margaret Walkes.
Yeah, but I, I think it's helpful when you guys.
Yeah.
Know what's.
It's not, uh, uh, Margaret emailed us the, all of the.
The minutes.
Minutes the last couple of days.
Okay, then I got an interesting email, um, about the, uh, Millstone, that Donna Dunn's been trying to hunt down. She's still trying to hunt down, it's a kudo star.
Yeah.
She's another one like, oh, she wants energy.
She says I want to let her go, so I, I, I applaud her, but, and the thing is, I don't want her, her time's gotta go, too. I mean, if the time, community and the owners are not gonna wanna give it up, I, I don't think, uh, we have a right to pursue it further, but the thing is that, but I give her kudos for her, it's pretty tense. If you like. Okay, yeah, he's, okay. Um, uh, Bob, we got a, um, I saw, I written an email, too, that you leave us in a note, but I think is, remember I wanted an expansion, uh, for the benefit of the zoning planning board.
I read this same email.
And I think is, they, they did a complete job, they stand behind their findings, and so that's fantastic.
I saw the, the email, and he gone, they've gone to all the areas that they were requesting to go to.
And, uh, we were concerned, but, um, I think we're fine with where it stands right now.
So you'll pass that to the planning board?
It's, you already did, you emailed the videos.
Oh, I did, I did.
The chairman.
Yeah, I did, I did, yeah.
I read my email, see?
And the results are the results, I mean, that's.
That's what it is, yeah. And the thing is, um, I had to reread it again for my education, and as a planning board rep, I, I, I'm gonna say it publicly, I heard in my planning board discussion, when I was discussing with their surveyor, I was taking the, uh, wrong path, and I reread that, and I was wrong, and my interpretation, after I reread it a couple of times, and so, uh, I'll be working with them at the, at the planning board work session, and, uh, I'll make note of that, too. The gentleman was actually correct, I guess, especially that I was wrong. So it's good to reread things now and then. Okay, um, we have an invoice for twelve hundred dollars for the Tommy Gate.
Do you want to defer that to next week?
I do, because Dave, Dave was involved.
We just got it in, yeah, yeah. And Dave had spoken to the company personally and got the initial quote difference of what they would be billing us, and.
Right, and, and, and Woody sent us some great rusted pictures of roster hardware that was melted on the, the, uh, truck, they do see the pictures, Bob?
I saw that.
They were kind of rusted that, Bob, for brand new.
Wow.
Even for, even for showroom quality, I, I mean, it was in the showroom, it's still kind of rusted.
Okay, so that will continue until next week?
Please.
I think we can resolve it next week, or we're off.
I do, too, we're just about there.
Okay.
There's a, um, there's a meeting for, uh, transportation projects across the, uh, state. Who was Lucy, attended the last meeting, was it the, uh, Donna, or was it someone in the police department? I think it was.
I think it was Chris Lattner.
I'd like to invite him to, to put it on his calendar.
Okay.
Uh, this, for the record, uh, for the public, DOT has these quarterly meetings, which give us updates, and the only update we, the only project we have is the Page's Corner. It's unsafe, and, um, we're, we've been working with the state to make it a safer passage, and Chris, Sergeant Chris Romanar has been a point man on that job.
This is just the upgrading of the ten-year plan.
Right, but we're on the ten-year.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
This, yeah.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be.
Every, every year they readjust the ten-year plan.
I don't want to be tenth every year.
Right, it's good to have someone there.
Yeah. And Lee, uh, uh, we had a request for the, uh, from, I see we had a request from, um, Tom Park for, uh, a new stamp machine, which costs four times as much.
Well, originally she misread the invoice, uh, the, the one that Dave gave to me was kind of blurry, not a, a true attachment quote, so I got the contact information from Linda for the person that had given her that quote, who did forward that to me, and when I spoke to him over the phone verbally, I asked a few right questions, and then, um, I said, so, and I, we, when I found out that, um, his quote said, monthly fee billed quarterly, I wanted to make sure that that quarterly amount was gonna be the.
Correct.
Times three, the correct figure.
Right.
And, uh, he said, oh, she must have read it incorrectly, because originally what we presented to the board was like four dollars difference for, between both posted machines, and hoping to get rid of the, um.
The owner machines.
The stamps, and, and replace it with the new, um, but it is substantially higher, um, and it's really not a self-seeding one, you literally have to, if I, if you looked at the video that I linked, that I sent you, um, you have to stand there, and you have to feed it in, in a fashion that you're comfortable with, you have six or seven envelopes, you have to just feed it into the, um, just like that. So you, it's not gonna save them time away from the machine, and I spoke to both Judy and Linda today, and they both went, oh, that's a little bit more than they had anticipated, so I don't, we're not going to go forward with this, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, and I think it's just.
End of subject.
End of subject, I think, just to buy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna open up the public comment again, Leo.
Yeah, good, good. Um, has the town ever gotten any resolution on, on the, uh, storage container at the, uh, recycling center?
Yes, we did, it was, actually, it was closed, it was, uh, it could be closed, locked, in weather type.
Okay, so it works.
It works.
But you didn't have to move it and re- regrade?
I think that wasn't working in progress, but the door was actually having a problem.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I think the manufacturer came inside, and Woody, Woody stayed right on top of it.
Yeah, that's my point, it didn't really need to be regraded, well, the issue was the box.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Um, the other thing is, I just wanted to make, uh, point out, I was out on, uh, Stark Lane the other day, and came to the stop sign at the Mansion Road, and all of a sudden I noticed, you can see the traffic, because the new owners of the house on the corner trimmed that tree up, so now you can see, you can see the traffic coming.
Nice.
It's like I couldn't believe it.
I thought I was gonna get anything coming down, 'cause I was going to the transit station to get some keys the other day, they're at work, and the car came, it's such a fast stop, right there, it was like, I just slowed down, and then she stopped, and then I proceeded, but that's nice.
You can, you can see now, yeah, I was like, I told Kayla, I said, look at this, you can, you can see traffic, right? I'm sure you must have noticed.
Yeah. All right, this is being made.
Pretty good, yeah.
I can't take credit for that one.
No, the owners.
But kudos to the owners, then, thank you, yeah. All right, um, anything else, please?
No, thank you.
Again, welcome back, and the thing is, uh, you were sure, how, your trip was well?
Yeah, yeah, it was, uh, different.
Sure.
Different this year.
Yeah.
Weather, why, yeah.
Okay, um, I think I'll go adjourn for a couple of two minutes, but wait, when I'm up, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's still, yeah.
I have something for the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, I just want to let the board know that we're coming up to October, as of tomorrow, and the, um, requirements for the opera grant is that I submit a, a report for, in the middle of October, so I will be doing that with the authorized expense, and then, um, hopefully with the finalized MS five thirty-five, I'll be able to give them an accurate revenue, uh, number that we'll be able to get an adjustment for. And then, um, one of the requirements to the, to the grant also, and it comes highly recommended, is that the individual managing the, these grants should be certified, and is that the individual managing the, these grants should be certified, and there is a certification course that I will be taking. It's gonna take three days, and the lady from the state did say it's not an easy, but course to take, but she said she's there and she would be glad to help me, so I will be doing that. And if I have to, I will be using the laptop out of the office so that I can get, you know.
I could authorize, I'd like to recommend you authorize, not overtime, but additional hours for your staff to cover the office.
Yeah.
For Varick and for Joe Marie for that week, for those days you're out.
Yeah.
I would recommend they both be covering the office.
I'll be, I'll give you an exact date from when I'll be doing that.
And give them a fair warning that you may ask them to come in and cover the office while you're gone.
Yeah.
Bob, you have any problem with that?
Nope.
So, but, thank you to the public.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, this, we're still non, we're not non-public yet, I'll make a motion if you want.
Well, you don't, do you have anything to bring up?
Right now, I just, this is non-public, I have, it's short, very short.
I, well, I understand that.
For the, for the camera, I have nothing else for them.
So I, what I wanna bring up, and we'll discuss it further next week, but I just want you to open your mind to this, and I was approached by a few people that are on the Historical Awareness Committee, that they keep getting confused with Historical Society. And so a lot of information they thought they could get, these people have already provided to the wrong entity. And it's because on our webpage, we have the Historical Society on the webpage instead of a link to their Facebook page. And so like every other organization, certainly, I mentioned that we bring it up tonight, but Dave's not here, and I'd like the selectmen to think about it, is maybe that link should, there should be a link to their Facebook page rather than them being on our site, because again, even.
Nothing to do with the town again, you said.
Well, you know, I, I remember talking to Dave, and Dave kept thinking it was a town entity. And, and a lot of people that are coming into town now, whether they're buying the old buildings where something's left behind or whatever, don't know in what direction to go with, you know, so I think that there would be something to look at. Like I said, I'd rather have the full select board.
So there is a tab for Historical Society, because I thought it was, went to their Facebook and it was like, it wasn't active.
I'm being told that you can go right onto our site and go right to.
I went there today only because I was looking for the, the selectmen's meeting, who was doing tonight, that's why, that's why I called you. But I, but while I was here, I checked the garden club, which I do, appeals on the garden club, and then I checked the Historical Society, and it goes right to the town's website. It's not their own page.
Yeah. No, it's, in the past, we had a link.
Well, it's under the community, organizations, community organizations.
Yeah.
But then when you click on them, it goes to the town's site, and it has the Dunbar Historical Society under the town's site.
Okay, I'll see if I can get that updated to be the same as the garden club.
Yeah, because the garden club went to their own, and they, you know, it's pretty and everything, you know.
I, I don't think that need require, I think let the town ministry run with the problem.
Yeah, if you want, if you wanna take care of it, that would be good, because.
It's not the controversy, that's wrong.
Well, you know, you have a Historical Awareness Committee trying to do work, and they're, they're competing, you know?
Yeah, and, and the whole thing, there was a lot of times people have answered stuff to the other organization, they think they've already taken care of it with the town, because they think it's a town organization. So I, I wanted to bring it up so that that gets cleared out.
And it could be part of software problem too, and I, we went into the right links.
Well, we're still learning the site, and it's, one thing I learned through Neo's inquiry today is that I created an agenda, and I got it posted yesterday before I left at quarter five, and come to find out, I had put it under the selectmen's tab. And in order to get it on the front.
Page.
Page on the calendar, I have to create an event, because it's not an agenda, it's an event, and then I can add the agenda there. So I'll do it on both places, I don't have a problem doing it, but it's just learning the, the ins and outs of the.
Overall, you satisfied with the software?
Very, I like it, it's fairly easy, we've got Joe Marie trained to add some agendas now, so if Joe Marie can do it, the goal is to get everyone to do their own updating, so that takes a lot more.
But Joe Marie's a computer whiz.
She does quite well.
She does quite well, she does quite well, okay. If you would, if you would look into that, that would be good, I don't think that requires a full board, I think this is, it's just wrong the way it is.
Well, I just, I was bringing up just in case when you had some problem with that.
No, I, I think, I think, there is a delay, they have different missions, and one's town-funded almost, and one's not. Okay, anything else, Bob?
That's it?
Okay, then at this time, we'll take a two-minute recess, and we'll go to the, I like to make a.